Good evening, everyone. I'd like to officially call our business meeting to order our business meeting for July 17th, 2019. We are in July and we feel it right now. So, we are going to try to get through our meeting as fast as we can so that way we can make it out of here okay. Before we go into the discussion of our superintendent's report, we would like to bring up our new student representatives, Ms. Charity Warren and Ms. Faith Hanley. Ms. Faith Hanley is our school board representative. And Ms. Charity Warren, if you could come to the microphone and lead the board in the Pledge of Allegiance. Normally, we have one of our NJROTC groups that come and do the pledge and present the colors, but because we are in the middle of summer, we have their on-time off right now as well. So, if I could just ask the board to stand and face the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. There are a few modifications that we have to the agenda tonight that I just wanted to make sure that we point out. The first modification is going to be something that we trial from this point going forward, and that is that we are going to be separating out our commentary, the citizen comments on agenda and non-agenda items. We are going to have citizens that want to bring forth comments on agenda items to come first, and they can speak to the items that are on the agenda, and then citizens who have comments on the non-agenda items will be able to speak to them towards the end of the meeting under the topic of discussion and discussion agenda. That is so that way we can get through the work of the board a little bit earlier. And so, there were a few policies that have been asked to be taken out of the consent agenda to be discussed under the discussion section, and therefore, as we work through this process tonight, we'll work through it together. And moving forward, this is just a process that we'd like to keep in place. So, what I'd like to do now is introduce Dr. Birdsong. We have appointed Dr. Birdsong as our interim superintendent tonight. It is her first meeting as interim superintendent, so we welcome you to the dais.
Thank you.
And very lovely article in the newspaper and on the various TV stations about your interim superintendency. We're very happy to have you here and very lucky.
My pleasure.
Thank you. And now, we will turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, members of the board, community, and staff. Before I share the superintendent's report with you this evening, I would like to once again thank the board for appointing me to serve as the acting superintendent of schools. As I've previously shared with you, I am truly, truly humbled by this appointment, and I am very much committed in to engaging in the work to move the school division forward. So, thank you again. Please know that I take the efforts behind educating our 29,000-plus students with the highest level of seriousness, commitment, and importance. And as you know, our students deserve our very, very best efforts, and I'm looking forward to working with you to realize the school division's theory of action, which speaks to our commitment to our students and to the community. We will, and we talked about this yesterday, we had a summer leadership institute, and I'll share a little bit about that with you in just a moment. We will intentionally facilitate an environment that supports exemplary and innovative teaching and learning opportunities in every school, in every classroom, every day, for every student, no exceptions. And so, doing with an intentional focus on educating the whole child, we will improve outcomes for each and every student, and we will truly, truly be able to make a difference in the lives of the students that we serve. So, again, I thank you for the opportunity to serve as your acting superintendent. So, now, if you'll give me just a moment, I'd like to introduce two very special people to you, moving right along with the superintendent's report. My first order of business is to recognize and to introduce to you school board student representatives. They will be serving as our representatives this year, one as the student board rep and the other as the alternate for the 2019-2020 school year. For the past two years, the school board has appointed two students to serve as the board's reps, the board's rep, and the school board's alternative representative or alternate. Students must go through an extremely rigorous process before being appointed. Appointed students have consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership skills, masterful collaboration skills, and a genuine desire to improve the schooling experience for all students. Faith Hanley, 12th grade student at Maury High School, has been selected to serve as the school board student representative. Please allow me to share some information with you about Faith. Faith is an honor roll student. She's been on the principals' list several times, and she manages to hold down two jobs, two jobs and an internship, and she is definitely, her parents depend on her to do things around the house, so you can imagine Faith is a very, very busy child. She is a teen intern at the Muse Writers Center. She serves as the DECA reporter at Maury High School. She's the assistant editor and contributor of the Maury High School Literary Magazine, The Slant, and she's the writer for the Maury High School newspaper, The Messenger. And certainly, she's a member of the National Student Honor Society and the Art Honor Society as well. So, when asked why she wanted to serve on the school board as a student representative, Faith responded, "It is never too early to take ownership of one's individual responsibility to promote equality and build cultures dedicated to continuing social justice. Discrimination and prejudice can create fractures within our society as well as our economy. However, we can begin to reverse this cycle by showing, teaching the value of teamwork and tolerance. My hope is that my contribution to the school board will aid in the generational social renaissance, bringing forth the ideas and voices of Norfolk's youth." So, without further ado, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Faith Hanley, who was selected as the school board representative. Faith, please stand. Selected to serve as the school board student representative alternate is Ms. Charity Warren. Please allow me to share with you some information about Charity. Charity is a senior at Lake Taylor High School. She attended the Governor's School for Humanities and will be taking criminal justice classes at NTC next school year. She's the head editor for Lake Taylor High School's newspaper, and she's a member of the Future Business Leaders of America organization. Last year, Charity served as the junior class president, and she currently works with the youth division of the NAACP. When asked why she wanted to serve on the school board as a student representative, Charity responded, "Being the student representative for the district would give me the opportunity to voice my opinion, as well as the opinion of other students, on issues that affect the student body of Norfolk. Having the ability to advocate for students and advise in the decision-making would give me an opportunity to help change my district. I strongly believe that I will be relentless in allowing my peers and I to be completely heard and represented on the decisions being made that directly impact us." So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you Ms. Charity Warren. Board members, I am certain that you will thoroughly, thoroughly enjoy working with Charity and with Faith. Don't you just love their names? Isn't that great? Isn't that great? Isn't that great? That's exactly what we need. So, for the past two days, all central office administrators and building principals and assistant principals convened to participate in the Norfolk Public Schools Summer Leadership Institute. In my view, the institute was a success, and team MPS is ready to move forward with the work. We utilized one of Renee Brown's books, Dare to Lead, as a supporting body of literature to guide our discussions and our continued work to more fully develop our theory of action. Brown asserts throughout her book that successful teams know that they must have courageous conversations, they must share concerns and challenges, and most of all, successful teams must be allowed to be vulnerable. Brown's research supports that being vulnerable is a strength that should be embraced and not a weakness or a hindrance that should be avoided. So, we talked a lot about vulnerability and trust, and we committed to one another that in order to more effectively move the work forward, we would put our guards and our shields down to allow ourselves to be vulnerable and to get the work done. And that's how we closed the Summer Leadership Institute, focused and energized and ready to give our students our very best efforts, and it was a good time. So, thank you for allowing me to share a little bit about the Summer Institute. And finally, I have some wonderful, wonderful news. Yesterday, in addition to having courageous conversations about our work moving forward, during the Summer Leadership Institute, we also took some time to celebrate our successes. Ten of our schools were selected to receive the 2019 Board of Education's Continuous Improvement Award through the Exemplar School Recognition Program. We recognized the leadership team of each school that received this prestigious award. To earn the Board of Education Continuous Achievement Award, a school must earn a state accreditation rating of accredited or accredited with conditions and meet at least one of the following benchmarks for improved performance on accreditation-related school indicators: a cumulative, and so this is a big deal, a cumulative 10-point increase over three years in the combined rates for reading and math, and in the pass rate for science with improvement each year. So, not just, you know, it has to be consistently for the past three years. A cumulative 10-point increase over three years in the combined rates for reading and math for two or more student groups with improvement each year for each group on both indicators. A cumulative 15% decrease in chronic absenteeism rate over three years with a decrease each year. So, for schools with a graduating class like our high schools, a cumulative four-point increase in the GCI or Graduation and Completion Index over three years. The 10 schools receiving the awards included the Academy for Discovery at Lakewood, Mary Calcott Elementary School, Coleman Place Elementary School, Crossroads K-8, Larchmont Elementary School, St. Helena Elementary School, the Southside STEM Academy at Campus Stella, Suburban Park Elementary School, WH Taylor Elementary School, and Willard Elementary School. So, again, I'd like to congratulate the students, the staff, and the administrators of these schools. Each principal received a letter from Dr. James Lane, the superintendent of public instruction, and a resolution from the Virginia Board of Education. So, we had a wonderful time. Congratulations. Dr. Gabriel, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Birdsong. That's certainly excellent news for us, and we can't wait to add more schools to that list this coming year.
Yes, we will.
Next on the agenda item is the school board's clerk report, and we have a new clerk with us today. Ms. Karen Tanner is serving as our interim school board clerk. We welcome her to this position. She wears many hats within our division, but she has graciously agreed to serve in this capacity. So, without further ado, Ms. Tanner, we will move on to the clerk's report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Gabriel, Vice Chair, Mr. Clanton, Acting Superintendent, Dr. Sharon Birdsong, our school board members, and the attendees who have braved the heat in here on this evening. We are so happy to have you here today as we want to congratulate and recognize you, our new administrators for the 2019-2020 school year. So, I would like to ask our school board members to come in front of the dais right now so we can get prepared to recognize these new administrators. And also, new administrators, a little note for you all. I know a lot of kids are shy to come forward and shake folks' hands, but we definitely need you to shake everybody's hand. And you will receive a special gift from us as a token of appreciation for joining us. Again, we want to thank you for being a part of the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community here in Norfolk Public Schools. So, let's get started. Our first administrator is Sally Adams, Assistant Principal of Sherwood Forest Elementary. Next, we have Julian Barlow, Senior Coordinator of Energy Management and Trades. Next, we have Jeffrey Brown, Assistant Principal of Lake Taylor School. She always have a smiling face. Rhonda Harris, the principal of Taylor School Elementary. Next, we have Julia James, Principal of Monroe Elementary. Another smiling face, we have Brandy Melvin, Principal of Norview Middle School. We have Frank Seymour, Assistant Principal of Sewell Point Elementary. Next, we have Michael Swain, Principal of Territor Swad. And last but definitely not least, Tanya Wright, Assistant Principal of PB Young Elementary. Let's give them all another round of applause. Of our new administrators.
The next item that we have on the agenda is a very special presentation by the new chapter president of the Junior League of Norfolk and Virginia Beach, Ms. Amanda Runwick-Lloyd.
Thank you, everybody, and good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and our elected members of the school board, and congratulations to you, Dr. Birdsong, on your interim appointment as superintendent. Amanda Lloyd, the president of the Junior League of Norfolk, Virginia Beach, which is a 95-year-old local nonprofit organization of women volunteers that are committed to making a positive impact in the community of the lives of women and children. I'm here tonight because I want to thank you all and your support of our signature project last summer, August of 2018. On our project known as Project Makeover, it has now been renamed to Elevate to Educate. We hosted a robust three-day makeover to improve the learning environment for the students of Jaycocks Elementary right here in Norfolk. Our goal is to provide our young learners with positive and improved aesthetics of their educational space. We all know funding and resources is limited across the board, and this project is a prime example of a successful collaborative effort between our Junior League, the city of Norfolk, the Norfolk Public Schools, and of course, our citizens, our constituents. And now, that's what I call building a better community together. The success of this project entailed over 300 dedicated community volunteers who just wanted to help out the school by collecting over 30 bags of litter and trash, pruning over 30 trees on the property, painting over 1,152 square feet of educational murals that align the halls of the elementary school, planting of a beautiful butterfly garden, and many pieces of landscaping, flowers all around the school, just to highlight a few of those accomplishments. And I know I saw many of you there helping us out. We were out in the heat raking, and we were out painting murals, and I thank you for your hard work and dedication that day as well. And it's because of your support and efforts on that project, our Junior League members selected Norfolk Public Schools as our 2018-2019 Community Partner of the Year. We were delighted to present you all with this award at our annual dinner in May, in which Dr. Gabriel and Mr. Clanton attended and accepted on behalf of the Norfolk Public School Board. We are very excited to announce for 2019, Elevate to Educate has selected Little Creek Elementary School to take place August 9th through the 11th to be made over. So, spread the word. Volunteer registration is open online, and we do hope to see each of you there, along with our community, building a better school. And thank you guys so much again for your support. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And we have the award right here. If you'd like to present it to Dr. Birdsong.
Absolutely.
We'll do a picture. That's a great, great event. And the kids, when they walk into the building the first day of school and they see all those murals painted, they're just amazed with the transformation that happened within their school. So, the next item that we have on our agenda is citizen comments on agenda items. So, if you are here to speak on the topics on our agenda, Ms. Tanner will call your name. You will come to the podium. The topics that we have on our agenda tonight are going to be personnel items, student support items, the policy approval, approval of the board minutes, and our dress code policy, health and education wellness policy, school wellness policy, and the nondiscrimination policy. And so, like I said, tonight is the first night that we're doing this as far as the formality goes, and so, we will work with everyone that comes to the podium to make sure that you are on proper topic for the items that you are bringing comments to. So, not a change from what we normally have discussed is when your name is called, please follow these steps. Come forward to the speaker's podium. The podium may be adjusted to suit your height. State your name and whether you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools or if you are employed by the system. State your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or organization, ask the others to stand and be recognized. Please give any written statements or supporting material to the clerk for the record, and speakers are limited to a one-time appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. Ms. Tanner, our first speaker.
Madam Chair, there is one guest speaker for citizen comment on agenda items, and
Good evening. I'm trying to... Just came from a wedding. My daughter just got married, and I had to do that prior to coming here. But it was important, just as important for me to come here. Good evening again, chairperson and members of the school board. My name is Stephanie Mars. I go by Mars now because I'm now divorced. Some of you know me as Hamberry. Basically, I reached out to you all because I have reached out to Mr. Sheets in HR and Mr. Coleman, the executive director of secondary schools, and I didn't get a response. So, now, I'm standing before you. These are the steps that I have taken to become reconnected with Norfolk Public Schools. There are positions that I am aware of that have opened, and yes, I have. It has been advertised, and I have been interviewed for several. As a tenure teacher, and as of one, that has given Norfolk Public Schools the last 15 years of my life, I am trying to understand why is it that I cannot be re-employed full-time? Currently, I am in the system as a sub, and is it not that Norfolk Public Schools does not need an experienced business teachers? I guess I might need to go and find a job somewhere else. It took a lot to say that because I've spent the last 15 years of my life here. I am an experienced teacher that has worked the last school year, 2018-2019 school, as a sub. It has been brought to my attention that during that timeframe, there were two positions that were available, full-time positions that was available at Norview High as I was fulfilling a long-term contract at Blair. I did not even know that that opportunity was there. So, with that happening like that, I had missed the opportunity to interview, not once, but twice while I'm in the system fulfilling my long-term duties. Due to unforeseen circumstances, I had to interrupt my contract on last year, May 11, 2018, before the school year ended. And I don't want to think that my leaving before the contract was up has caused such a bias. I'm going to stop in a minute. I feel as if I have left a bad taste in someone's mouth and as if it's being held against me. While others are leaving the district, I am one who prefer to stay with Norfolk Public Schools in lieu of looking to other districts for employment because I didn't want to do that because I'm part of the family when we won the board prize in 2005. I was a part of that, and ever since then, I have worked endlessly to achieve that magnitude of recognition for us again. I recognize the importance of having the right people in the right place at the right time to foster the work that is set before us. I know that is paramount. Therefore, I always make it important to build positive, genuine relationship with my students, my colleagues, which they are well aware of the potential that is instilled in our students and our children.
Ms. Morris, I need you to wrap up your comments.
I'm getting ready to stop. I'm right at the end right now. I'm right at the end. All I know is that I am an asset. Leave that with you.
And that was our last speaker.
Okay, thank you very much. So, the items that are on the consent agenda are a personnel report with one modification that is moved to the discussion and decision agenda. We have student support services report without any modifications. We have policy approval. The policies that we are approving right now are going to be JFCZ bullying prevention and ACZ nondiscrimination. There has been a request by board members to have the homework policy, the dress code policy, the health and education and PE policy, and the school wellness policy pulled from the board. and the School Wellness Policy pulled for separate voting items. The Consent Agenda also includes the Approval of the Minutes. So, can I have a motion on the floor to approve the Consent Agenda as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Consent Agenda as presented with the noted modifications.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, just for clarity, we don't have any minutes yet, correct?
We do not. I was... No, I'm sorry. That was a... Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Cassine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. Okay. So, what we're going to do now is we are going to go through each of the items that were pulled off of the Consent Agenda. We're going to vote on them individually. So, we are going to start first with item... We're going to wait until we do that, after we do these right here.
Okay, so you... Okay.
Okay, so Personnel Item A. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the Dr. Birdsong's recommendation for Personnel Item A?
I move that...
Oh. Okay. Go ahead. You go ahead.
I move that we accept the recommendation of Personnel Item A as proposed by Dr. Birdsong.
Second.
I'm sorry. Go ahead and second. I withdraw my second.
Sorry. I'm going to sit back. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that there is none, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Cassine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye, thank you. It's the ayes have it, and the motion passes. The next item that we have on the agenda is Item 6.03, Policy IKB, Homework Policy. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the Homework Policy as presented?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Homework Policy as presented.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay, seconded. But they were waiting for you. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, if I may, Madam Chair. So, I know we have a motion on the floor for the approval as is presented. I would just ask the board if we would consider two things, or perhaps an amendment or a change. In the proposed policy, we have a series of guidelines. And under the Guidelines for Homework, it identifies guidelines for homework include... And then, we are making lots of shoulds into shalls. And my concern is by changing them into shalls, we're moving them from guidelines into directives that may have the unintended consequence of placing additional burden on teachers and administrators to try to manage and address. So, for example, Item 2 says, "Teachers and administrators shall take appropriate steps to communicate with parents regarding the division's homework policy and solicit their support." So, while I am definitely supportive of teachers and administrators communicating to parents about our homework policy, I think when it becomes a shall, then it creates a certain level of enforcement responsibility, and I think it can lead to additional burden on our teachers and on our principals, which I know is not our intent. Another example is, and I'm just picking them randomly, Number 8, Homework shall serve a valid purpose and be closely related to classroom activities. I mean, yeah, but I think we just have to be careful that if we don't, we can raise... Create a scenario where students and parents and others can raise questions that just drags us down to a level that I don't think is intended here. So, I would just encourage that we continue in the should range as a guideline versus a shall.
Can I just, Ms. Martin? Give a comment to that? The shalls are actually... The only intent of that is to make it more grammatically correct. It's not to change the intention of...
Okay. I'm in my... I guess in my...
We've been using it in other policies as well, and we've had the should-shall conversation, and it's been determined that shall is more grammatically correct in these cases.
Again, my only concern is, from my reading and experience, I thought that shall was a much stronger directive than a should, and that's why I was raising it. And the other thing I just also wanted to mention in Item 10, where I know we added the... Trying to make sure that we were being respectful of the different circumstances of students and families. I'm also concerned that the language, as it currently reads, "A student who misses homework assignments due to absences excused or unexcused", then we've added "due to their access to resources or any family circumstance that made homework challenging, shall be given sufficient time." So, in the original policy, it was really focused on if someone had an excused/unexcused absence. I'm concerned that by us adding the additional language in that particular statement, that we are opening the door for any circumstance resulting in the school system then being required to provide time for makeup work and completing assignments. So, my only recommendation would be that if we want to have language that encourages flexibility and empathy and support for students who have lack of access to resources or family circumstances, that we create that as a separate item, that we keep it, but we create it as a separate item, rather than having it tied to missing homework assignments. And I know we've discussed this several times, and I apologize for bringing this up now, but after rereading it 45 times, it just struck me that the language that we have there may have unintended consequences around homework assignments versus what I think our intent is, is to encourage our administrators and teachers to be understanding and empathetic in their assignment of homework, to making sure that everyone has an equitable opportunity to perform tasks that we're providing.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Dr. Birdsong?
Mr. Jordan, we did have a conversation, the administration, regarding the should and the shall. And we did agree upon the shall because we wanted it to be a little more directive. Oftentimes, we find ourselves in situations where teachers and staff feel like they don't have clear direction. And so, when you say should, that means, okay, you don't have to, but you should, but it doesn't mean that you have to. So, we wanted to make sure that the language was pretty affirmative in saying, "These are our non-negotiables, our expectations." And so, that's why we changed the should to shall.
I understand.
Okay, all right. And then, I was just going to say, in addition, in looking at Number 10, "Due to their access to resources", we did have a conversation about that as well. And we do think that is a legitimate concern, that we wanted to make sure that it was noted in the guidelines, because there are individual circumstances, family circumstances, that would warrant a teacher being a little more flexible with a child. And so, we wanted to include that.
And just for clarity, I support that. My... What I'm suggesting is, is we state what you just said.
And have it as a Number 14.
Yes, that we encourage our teachers to be flexible in that regard versus tied it directly to...
And excuse or excused absences.
Exactly.
So, Ms. Camson, and then we're going to repeat what we need to modify from that.
Yeah, I'd like to address that a moment, because I fought so hard to get this put in. And the reason I did that, as I said multiple times, was that I have a concern that we have so many low-income students, and that's what the whole special circumstances has to do. And I wanted it to be very clear that every school made a serious effort to make sure that those students from low income or other challenging backgrounds that really interfere greatly with their ability to get their homework assignments done, be given the opportunity to do so in circumstances that make it easy and give them a lot of support. And I think we have a lot of low-income children in this city, and I think it's very, very important that we make special efforts to make sure that they're able to do everything that needs to be done, so they can be successful in school.
And just so you know, again, I support the language and have...
So, what is the proposed language, then, that we are looking to change? What is the proposal that's on the table? I just want to...
So, the...
There's no proposal on the table.
There's no proposal on the floor. So, unless there's an amendment being made...
Okay. So, Mr. Jordan, are you proposing an amendment to the motion on the floor?
Well, I would get there if there was board support for it, but I wouldn't prolong it if there's not even any board support for it. I just wanted to make some clarity that from my reading of it, I... Again, I am supportive of trying to make sure that we provide the flexibility. And under the current policy, and if you pay attention to the last portion of it, where it says, "Give sufficient time to make up the work or be allowed to complete the assignment while at school", all I'm suggesting is, an affirmative, is to say that we are requiring, asking, suggesting, whatever the appropriate language is, that our teachers and administrators provide that flexibility and support for students who may have a lack of access to resources versus right now, the way we are proposing, it says, "Once a student misses the homework assignment due to these things, then we will provide it." So, I don't know if you're following that distinction.
Is there anyone who would favor amending the policy?
Yes. Oh, yes. Yes. And for clarity, so what I'm hearing is that Mr. Jordan is suggesting Item 10, under the Guidelines, be worded to say, "We encourage", or that's the word I heard Dr. Birdsong, I think, say, "our teachers and administrators to provide flexibility and support for students lacking resources."
In family circumstances that may provide challenges for them completing their homework. That's...
Okay, lacking resources and family circumstances.
Could you read that again, please?
Yeah, say the last...
It needs to be formed in a form of amendment. I'm just using the same language.
Oh, that we have here, okay. So, can you state that in the form of a motion to amend the current motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that we amend the current motion on the floor for... To change Item 10, so that Item 10 would read, "A student who misses homework assignments due to absences, excused or unexcused..."
Mr. Jordan?
Yes.
Is it Item 9 and not 10?
No, it's 10.
On mine, it's 10.
It's the red line version.
The numbering is different.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can look on the clean version.
Because we eliminated number 1.
Right. We're looking at the red line version of the...
Can we look at the clean version?
Okay, all right. Give me a second. I'll pull up the clean version. Sorry about that.
Shoot, I don't even think I can... Let me see here. Oh, yeah. So, it is number 9, right?
It's the same thing. We're just changing 9, right?
Oh, okay. Clean versions under the executive content. Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Number 9?
You know what? I just withdraw the motion. I will... I'll send the recommendation... I mean, I still feel this way, but I don't want to prolong it. I'll write up a recommendation, and you all can consider it at a future meeting.
Put it in the executive session.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'll call the question.
Okay. Ms. Tanner, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Cassine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
No.
Gabriel?
Aye. The ayes have it. The motion carries. Next item that we have, let me just make sure. Okay, so that was 6.03, Item 6.04, JZZB Dress Code Policy. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the Dress Code Policy as presented?
I move to approve the Dress Code Policy as presented.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing that there is none, Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Cassine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
There we go. Jordan?
Nay.
Aye. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Item 6.05, Policy IGAE-IGAF, Health, Education, and PE Policy. May I have a motion on the floor to adopt the policy with the changes presented?
We haven't done it yet.
No, we're in...
Can we have discussion?
We'll do a motion, and then we'll do a second, and then we'll do the discussion.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the Health, Education, and Physical Education Policy as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. And now, open for discussion. Any discussion points?
I need a clarification. Mr. Cloud, is this requiring a Z notification before we adopt it? I just want to be sure that there's a...
Yes, to the extent it's got language...
Yeah. Right. Because it... We had agreed in our work session discussion to remove the recess piece out of the required activity that would constitute what physical education could include. It is... Because it is different, I just want to be sure that we include the Z on there.
It's just a practical matter.
It's a practical. It's not a...
Oh, the Z on the IGAE.
On the naming convention, yeah. Yeah, so...
So, I'll accept a friendly amendment to add the Z.
Any further discussion?
And this brings the alignment in place that we talk about if we pass the subsequent wellness policy.
Right. If we pass the wellness policy, it will bring it into alignment.
Okay. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Cassine?
Aye.
Camson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is Item 6.06, Policy JHCFC, School Wellness Policy. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the changes that have been presented for the School Wellness Policy?
I move to accept the changes that have been presented for the School Wellness Policy, JHCFC.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? Any discussion on the floor? I will just add a point that I think that the spirit of bringing the policies in alignment is a good one. However, I cannot support us dialing back the minutes of PE from 150 to 100. I would just prefer for it to stick at 150, knowing that we will be working toward that alignment in the future as we try to strive for better wellness that alignment, um, in the future as we try to strive for, um, better wellness for our students, both in recess and in their physical education. So I will be voting no when the roll call is called. If there's an, if there's no further discussion, then Ms. Tanner, if you can call the roll.
I vote, while I support, um, a greater number of minutes for, for res- uh, I'm sorry, for, uh, physical education, I think being in compliance with our policies is extremely important, and for that reason, uh, for, for this two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, uh, school year, I'm voting to support, uh, alignment of these policies.
Kamson?
Aye.
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 Martin?
I'm, I'm voting aye with the, uh, commitment to, um, to evaluate and to make sure that students are getting enough, activity time that they deserve in their school day, um, but I'm voting aye.
Jordan?
I, um, went through and, and did another review of the policy. Uh, I'm going to support it, but I'm going to share with the board some, uh, additional cleanup and clarification I think we should do.
Madam Chair, and Mr. Jordan, no disrespect to anyone, but I remind my colleagues that we have a discussion period in formal session for a reason, so that we can add that at that point, so that when we get to the voting period, we're casting a vote. And that's just no disrespect, I just want to remind my colleagues that why, that's why we have a discussion period.
I'm not sure why you interjected that while I was speaking, but I was just simply trying to share with the board that I'm voting in favor of the policy, but there are some additional items that I wanted to share with the board, and I just wanted the board to be aware that they were coming, that was all. Thank you.
And.
Aye, if that wasn't clear.
And then Ms. Tanner, just, just for, for malice sake, just call, call on me. Doctor.
Doctor Gabriel.
No, okay. Uh, the next item on our, uh, on our agenda, um, is citizen comments on non-agenda items, so if there are any citizens who wish to speak on non-agenda items, Ms. Tanner, um, will call your name and you will come to the board. The same criteria, um, uh, it, um, applies to these comments as well, I will not repeat them.
Madam Chair, we have two guest speakers tonight, the first one is Barbara Simmons, followed by Ellen Fredsenreiter. And if I didn't pronounce that correctly, I apologize.
And, and I will just say, please state your name and your address, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen on all the board, my name is Barbara Simmons, and my address is eight oh four Pelham Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I am a ten-year employee of Norfolk Public Schools, and I'm, I am employed as the, uh, CTE teacher specialist. I have served over thirty-two years with the Virginia Department of Education in a variety of positions, including that of past director here at Norfolk Public Schools for CTE. I have always approached and completed my duties with efficiency and professionalism. The fact is reflect, that fact is reflected in my past evaluations. I have had no disciplinary action in any position during my career. My teacher certification was due for renewal on June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. I had trouble getting into my CPR class, I had to go outside of the system to the Red Cross, uh, for that class. On July first, I went to obtain Mrs. Goshen's signature for my renewal paperwork, and I had all the required certificates and training records required by Human Resources for renewal of my teaching certificate, which had expired on June thirtieth. She was not in that day, so I asked another supervisor, but what, but he advised me to wait and go through Mrs. Goshen. I came back on July second, Mrs. Goshen thumbed through my documents and directed me to HR to Mr. Sheets. She told me he was signed for me and did not mention that I was missing anything from my paperwork. On, once in HR, I was told by Mr. Sheets that he had just received a telephone call from Director Goshen, who told him to immediately post my position as a vacancy. I was completely caught off guard, as I had just spoken to Mrs. Goshen a few minutes earlier, and she had not mentioned any of that to me. The unexpected termination of my employment at sixty-two years of age is devastating to me. Not only for the loss of the income, but for the loss of my medical coverage that is necessary for quality of life, my life. It is a poor reward for a decade of service to this district and serves and sends the message that Norfolk Public School Systems has little respect for those long-term employees. After ten years in this district, I'm being thrown away for delayed renewal. And my renewal is in process now. This shows me that others and unothers at Norfolk Public Schools, sometimes is not valued a long-term employees, and if I ever had to start over again, uh, and looking for another job, how logical would that be? I have enjoyed my time here at Norfolk Public Schools. This is why it's so important that we continue to, um, be able to voice our opinions and let you know how we feel. It has been a nightmare being suddenly terminated from my position after ten years. I am requesting and I am praying that this board look into this matter, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Okay, can I do this one again? If I go over five, five seconds. So, um, the thing, the, the items that I'm passing out to you right now is, um, are some IEP documents, because unless you have a child with an IEP, um, even if you've gone to special education conferences and things like that, that's not the same thing as having, having the hard copy in your hand. There's one more coming. Um, the first one is from two thousand and seventeen from my daughter's IEP at Taylor Elementary. It's things like reduced distractions in the classroom and, uh, group size and audio versions of test items. And it's, it's pretty limited for a girl who barely spoke English, as most of you know our story. And if you notice that it says "as needed," and, um, I can attest that "as needed" hardly ever happened. Um, the two second pages that follow that are just samples of a lot of the homework and classwork that came home. Um, a child who can barely read English, who needs special education accommodations, is given a document that says "follow directions," when she should be having this read to her. So I took it upon myself to come up with a list of potential accommodations that could benefit my daughter based on my knowledge of her, and those are the following two pages. And I read this at an IEP meeting, actually, it was not an IEP meeting, in September of the following year, trying to do my best to get what would help my daughter, for my daughter, and, um, was told that instead of an IEP meeting, I should have a teacher meeting, and again, "as needed" stayed on her IEP, and I, uh, "as needed" hardly ever happened. You guys are used to me issuing calls to action while I'm up here, and I don't have anything as strong to say, but I would highly recommend to learning support that any, that "as needed" is never, ever used in an IEP document because that leaves, leaves entirely too much room for things not happening. So fast forward to, um, the last two pages, which is her current IEP from two thousand and nineteen, which is very specific about when it's going to happen, what is going to happen, chunking assignments, repeating instructions to a child who's still acquiring English. Does that not make sense? So, um, but I noticed that it's twenty-four pages, and trust me, I proofread every single word in every page at this point. It's exhausting. I've spent thousands of hours over the past several years doing this, I jumped into it, my daughter came to us at age nine from China. Um, most parents of Norfolk Public School childrens do not have the resources, they do not have the wherewithal, they do not have the academic background to do what I have had to do. So, which is basically, problem number one is getting her accommodations into her IEP. And then number two is making sure they happen, once it is there, neither of them which are which my job, but have been my job. So, um, anyway, I hope that you find that enlightening, and thank you very much. Okay, and that concludes our speakers. Yep. This does conclude our speakers, thank you. Thank you very much. Um, let's see, so that was, that was item six point oh seven, now item six point oh eight, uh, matters of the board. Ms. Kamson?
Thank you. I have three items that I want to bring to the attention of the board, uh, in the form of requests to make. The first item is, as we all know, we're in transition from a, um, a superintendent that has recently left to an interim, and in getting ready to start a superintendent's, uh, search for a full-time superintendent. And I would like to request, uh, that we do a external audit of all of our finances, not just the general budget, which is done, but all finances, all the grants, to see that we are completely on time with everything, that everything is, um, it balances out exactly right, so that we have a fresh start. When I became a school principal, it was my first request to have a complete audit of the budgets that we have had in the school, just to be sure that everything was ready to go for my new tenure, and I would like to do that for the current superintendent. So that's my first request. My second request is that we asked, um, our past superintendent, um, and it's also in the accountability plan, that an external audit be done of the Special Education Department, not just compliance with the rules, but also, uh, the spending of the budgets, and most important to me, the delivery of instruction. And so I, and our, and the accountability plan has that to be due, I believe, Ms. Basine, December. And so, um, I asked the superintendent before she left, and she said she was working on it, but I don't know if we got anything, when she was looking for who to choose to do that, because we wanted it done externally, so I'd like that to be looked into, if that's possible. And the third item is, as you know, last September, this board voted, uh, and gave a direction to the superintendent to, uh, form a safe and secure school task force. At this point in time, that has yet to be done, and I'd like something done with that immediately. Thank you very much.
So, um, in, in terms of process, I, I know that many of you will have a, a variety of items that you'd like us to attend to, so I just need clear direction in terms of what it is that you want me to do. In, in terms of the will of the board, how you want me to proceed. Yeah.
So then, um, so Ms. Kamson, thank you very much for, for your items. Um, are there any other board members who have items for matters of the board tonight?
You mean, in, along with this or something different from this?
Something different from this.
Uh, something different before we close.
Okay, okay, so then, um, so then, uh, Ms. Kam. We are, we are going to comment, I just, I just didn't know what other comments other, uh, individuals had, uh, that were different than this. So then, uh, I would like to, um, have some discussion on the items that Ms. Kamson has brought forward. First of all, let's start with item number one, the external audit of all finances and grants. Comments on that, and I'm going to ask that we limit comments to one minute per member, everybody will get one minute to speak. Um, Ms. Tanner, if you could do the time for that? Okay. Alright, comments on, on this first topic, Ms. Smith?
We have an external audit planned, so I think before we move too far on this, we need to get Ingram to find out, um, just how we could, or should or shouldn't fit this in sooner than later, because it's not going to make sense to spend a whole lot of money to have a full audit during, for this transition, and then turn around and have it again for the next transition. It's my belief the one that we have will suffice for what Ms. Kamson is asking.
Okay. Can I respond? Uh, yep, Ms. Kamson?
Yes, we do have an external audit, uh, but that's only for the general budget. And I'm concerned that we have a lot of other budgets, there are multiple, multiple budgets in Norfolk Public Schools, especially related to grants, and I'd like all of those done. Thank you.
Um, what I'd like to propose is, um, to bring this information to Dr. Birdsong, and Dr. Birdsong, if you can come back to the board and let us know the amount of work that would entail with this request, um, and then the board can give you direct, um, action on, uh, proceeding with it.
Thank you.
Ms. Basine?
I don't have items to add at this time, but one thing I'd like for us to consider, I, I mean, I have several items, but what I'd like for us to, to think about is, you know, when we do convene for training, retreat, um, I think it's a good opportunity to talk about our accountability plan and aligning it with our board calendar. We do have dates in there, and so I think when we make requests, there, there are items, as Ms. Kamson, uh, mentioned, you know, there are items in there that are, already indicate when we expect reports by. Um, so I think we should have discussion, make sure we're all on the same page during this transition, um, and go through that, and align our board calendar with the accountability plan to make sure that, um, everything in there, you know, the recommendations that, that we should have coming forward, whether it's from a task force or, um, an advisory committee, that we have that all planned out in our, in our calendar, uh, so that we're not inundating, uh, Dr. Birdsong right now with, you know, a long list, because I'm sure we, all seven of us could have, um, a very long list of, of things.
Madam Chair, um, I, I agree with, uh, Ms. Basine on that one, in regards to being able to take some time, um, at a board retreat or, you know, at a time like that. Um, so my question really is back there, is have we decided on, as a board, what that date will be? I know we were waiting on a couple of dates, and it's been bounced back and forth, because it's important that we move along with that. So have we decided on that?
So, so the, so the last time that I had an opportunity to check the, the doodle poll that was out, there's two polls that are out, there's one on the, on the last three, uh, sessions, um, that we have contracted with the VSPA, and then there is still the first session that we were, we were, our goal was to have in July, but we couldn't get all seven to, uh, agree on a date.
That's important, because all seven of us have to be.
That's right.
In order to do the VSP.
That's right, and so, um, you know, um, Dr. Birdsong, um, shared with us some circumstances, um, that, um, we are, uh, Ms. Tanner and I have spoken, in fact, we spoke today, again, in making sure that that information, that everybody has completed the poll, and that we are going to be looking at the, um, the dates that the most, the majority of folks have in common and available, and I will get that information out to you, she, she or I will get that information to, out to you by Friday, and I have actually been in contact with the VSPA to let them know that by close of business on Friday, uh, I want to say that's what I had shared with them, that we would have that information. Um, so, that's where we are with that.
So that would include like our calendar, aligning, um, our schedules, going over our board priorities and objectives for the year, too.
That's right, mhm, okay. Mr. Jordan?
Yeah, just, just comment on that and the, the bigger picture, so I just want us to be careful that we aren't conflating the, uh, board working retreat with training, uh, because if we spend our training time doing that, it may have some impact. So I just want to put that there, and then the other piece, just in terms of the bigger picture of the requests that, uh, Ms. Kamson made and the discussion we've had thus far, and I think about on thirty seconds. It's, the, the discussion right now kind of reinforces the, what my position has been, uh, over the last month, that I think as a board and as a governance team with Dr. Birdsong, we really need to come together and talk about what our expectations and priorities are, uh, for, for her during this time period. Because I think we have to be very cautious, as Mr. Clanton and Ms. Basine said, that we are not, uh, taxing her so much with these tasks that we aren't able to, uh, accomplish the other things that, that we have for us. I think that's just a conversation in a time that I think we need to set aside as a board to talk about what our expectations are and what things we want to see tackled, uh, over the next ninety days, one hundred and eighty days, uh, so that we can be fair to Dr. Birdsong and her team, and know what we expect as a board as it ties to the accountability plan.
Madam Chair, back here, Mr. Jordan. So, did I hear you right and correct in the respect of the training, not getting that confused with us actually, I guess, doing some of the priority, um, calendar type of stuff, that those things should be separated?
So, so I'm not sure what the discussion has been with the training, I'm just saying that I think as a board and as a governance team, we can work on.
Yeah.
The alignment between the accountability plan and the calendar without any trainers. The trainer is going to help us.
So we can pick a date and move forward with it.
Pick a date and move forward.
Let's pick a date and move forward with it.
Okay, okay. Um, Doc, um, Ms. Kamson, I, I definitely, I know that we only had discussion, oh, yeah. I know that we only discussed item one, but I, I feel the sentiment about items two and three, and we're not going to forget those. So, Ms. Martin?
Thank you, I just, um, want to say, I understand the, um, need to not overwhelm, um, during the, you know, any of the staff and Dr. Birdsong dur- during this transition, but at the same time, um, particularly with the special education, was it, the special education, um, audit, the last we were told was that it was narrowed down to one agency or entity, and so simply, just give us that information, who was that, if you know who that is? And so, um, you know, that, I don't, and if you don't, then you don't. I mean, just, just to inform us on where we are with, where, where things were left off. And for the, um, Safe Schools Task Force, we let, we met in February, that was our last meeting, and at that point, we were supposed to bring in, um, inter, our external stakeholders, and to our knowledge, we, we were, I, I remember leaving it as they were invited and identified and invited, um, but we didn't hear anything other than that. So were they in fact identified and invited? And, um, was there any follow-up to let, notify them that we weren't meeting again, you know? So, so there are just a lot of things that are left hanging that I think we should figure out where we even are at the process, not necessarily what are we going to do next, but just.
Where are we in the process?
Where are we?
Mhm, okay. I appreciate that, thank you for that, those additional items. Okay. So I would like to have a motion on the floor to, after we adjourn this meeting, to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, move that we go into closed session.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, Ms. Tanner, if you can call the roll.
Yes, Basine?
Aye.
We have to read the motion, right?
Oh yeah. Move that the members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section two point two dash three, seven, one, one of Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended for C consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members, consultants, or attorneys pertaining to actual or probable litigation or other specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by counsel pursuant to subsections seven and eight of the above cited code section. The subjects of this sub, of this section of the motion refer to advice of counsel regarding legal issues related to the social media posting of a video to a Norfolk Public School site, and discussion of a notice to preserve evidence, and a four-year request for personnel information of identified individuals.
That's. Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye, thank you, and thank you everyone for bearing with us through this heat.
Meeting is adjourned.